This time I want to call the August Board meeting to order. Board members, you may rise for the invocation. Mr. Rogers, would you lead our board in the invocation?
Let's pray. Congress, Hail and Father, as we are gathering here tonight, we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon us. We thank you for standing beside us, and sometimes we let you down. Lord, we pray that your guidance upon this board, as we make decisions for the children of Haywood County Schools, for the staff and the leaders and teachers, that we can make the best decisions and give them the best tools that they can have to educate children. We thank you for those many blessings that you've given us with these tools. We thank you for the many things that you've already given us, the great teachers that you give as school system. And now, we pray your guidance upon this board as we do the things that are right and in the best interest for the education of Haywood County students. Amen.
You may rise for the invocation, I mean for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Maybe I'll get that right in a couple of months. Board members, under announcements, we have our next regular board meeting here at the Education Center on September the 11th at 7:00. Don't forget, we've got our Fall Bingo from the Haywood County Schools Foundation. She's actively looking for folks to attend and play and to help and to donate gifts and money and all of the above. And it all goes back to the school kids and the foundation to be used for scholarships, et cetera, for our school students. It's going to be August the 19th at 6:00 p.m. at the Canton Armory. It's a very nice location and really no excuse not to be there. So, I'll try to be there, and I hope you will too. Also, we have the Teacher of the Year Luncheon. I'm sure that Ms. Brooke needs to get a number from us on who all will be able to attend that function. So, please get with Ms. Brooke and let her know if you can make that Teacher of the Year Luncheon. That's on September the 8th at 12:00 noon at the Law Ridge Country Club. Always a great event and you get to see some wonderful, wonderful staff celebrate being recognized by their peers as Teacher of the Year. I do know that we have a couple of agenda adjustments that we do need to take care of. Without objection, we have, how many items from the building and grounds? One item from building and grounds. Let's do it. Between 13 and 14 will add building and grounds. Remind me if I skip over it, Jimmy, please. And finance has a couple items they would like to add and we'll just add it under the regular financial reports. Just do that during the Finance Committee reports, please, Mr. Henson. That will be fine. If there's no objection, those items will be added to the agenda. They will be added. Now, it gives me great pleasure to recognize Mr. Jeff Haney for some special recognition.
Chairman Francis and board members, it's an honor and a privilege to recognize Caroline Bethé Brown. Caroline has been working at Central Haywood High School. This is starting her 18th year. She's an outstanding social studies teacher. And two and a half years ago, she started working on her Global Badge. And it is awesome that Carol Douglas come because that was one of Carol Douglas's incentives that she gave him and pushed it. And Caroline's one of very few, well, the only one in Haywood County that has a Global Badge. So, it took her two and a half years to get it. It's over 100 hours of work. What I'd like to do is let Mr. Mashburn come up. He's the principal and let him explain some of the things about the Global Badge and then let Caroline tell you a little bit about it.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the board, thank you for this opportunity, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte. September of 2011, the North Carolina Board of Education formed a task force on global education to assess the state's efforts to produce globally competitive graduates ready to live, work, and contribute in an interconnected world. Based on its findings, they created the Global Educator Digital Badge. Just last year, only 17 total completed this and earned their badge. There's only four in western North Carolina and there's only two high school teachers in the entire state. And Ms. Caroline Bethé Brown is one of them. So, congratulations.
Well, I do have a few people to thank. First of all, teaching at Central Haywood High School for 18 years has been an absolute joy. It's an amazing school. When I came here, moved here from Miami, Florida, I knew that bringing global awareness into the school system was very important, something that I'm very passionate about. Well, two and a half years ago, the summer of 2016, Dr. Ann Garrett and Dr. Carol Douglas chose me to represent the county at a global leadership program sponsored by Worldview, UNC Chapel Hill. Ever since then, I've attended, put in more than, over 200, more than 200 hours in CEUs on global education, many of which were connected to the trip that I took in 2016. Yeah, I had my years messed up. 2016, I was in South Africa representing the county, WISCO Global. So, it was 2015 that I went on the leadership program. The digital badge is relatively new. And the whole idea behind the digital badge is for teachers to bring global issues, global topics, global education into the classroom and to prepare a very in-depth unit on the world. Mine compared segregation in the United States with apartheid in South Africa. And I probably put as much time into just preparing this unit as I did when I renewed my national boards. And we currently have two teachers working on it right now who will be submitting in September. But in addition to Dr. Garrett and Dr. Douglas giving me extreme, the utmost support, Knox Harden is extremely supportive. Kim Jackson also helped me as there is a great deal of maneuvering with schoolmen. But anyways, I would like to say thank you to all of you and it is a great honor.
Certificate of recognition is awarded to Caroline Bethé Brown in recognition of her outstanding achievement in earning the Global Educator Digital Badge given this 14th day of August, 2017, by Haywood County Schools. If I could just say one thing, this program would not have been possible without Dr. Douglas. She was the one who really brought us on board with it. She kept insisting that we do something about it and it really is starting to pay off now. So, Dr. Douglas, we certainly appreciate that. Congratulations again, Caroline.
Mr. Chairman, I had the privilege of talking to Ms. Brown last year about this and she brought a presentation and I was very overwhelmed with that too. And I really appreciate that. It was very exciting and very good information to bring our school system in with, like you say, the global efforts. And I think it's a great program and I appreciate what efforts you put into it.
Anyone else? Congratulations. Sure, Ms. Douglas, come up to the, Dr. Douglas, come up to the mic. Thank you for coming up and we appreciate you making the effort to come tonight.
Chairman, board members, thank y'all for letting me interrupt. I want y'all to know this was as difficult, like Caroline said, as national boards, but with no money. They don't get big bump that national board people do. They do this intrinsic motivation. And like Mr. Mashburn says, she's one of 17 in the state. And if you go to their website, on DPI's website, I think, let's see, I want to say like 13 are from Cabarrus County, three are from Buncombe County, one from maybe Union and one from Edgcombe and then Haywood. And that's it for the whole state.
Wow.
So, I think that's pretty amazing. And also, she was instrumental when she went to Worldview. She came back and she said, "This was awesome. We got to keep this going. What can we do?" Got a group together and we sat down, we brainstormed and we decided to form this group, yeah, that met once a month. And we have had between 10 and 30 teachers that would attend these, you know, for no better reason other than their interest in global education. So, she's remarkable. It came from her that we started on.
And Mr. Haney is going to continue the tradition. We have our first meeting always coming up.
Great.
Thank you. Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the board during an open session? Thank you. Board members, you've had an opportunity to read and look over the July 10th and July 26th, both closing regular session minutes. At this time, we entertain a motion that be approved as presented. Okay, Ms. Barrett has made the motion to approve. Do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Next on our agenda, it brings, we'll have Ms. Trantham come up and present it to us. I think it's called the Title I Plan. It's quite lengthy, a lot of detail in it, a lot of work.
Evening, School Board Chairman and board members. I am presenting tonight our Title I Budget for the 2017-18 school year for approval. Our plan and allotment from the state for this year was $1,957,394. The first page that you have is the Statement of Assurances and that, in a nutshell, is what we are required to do by the federal government if we accept their money. The budget includes, excuse me, $1,442,650.78 for our K-5 Title I Schools. This is divided out to the eight elementary schools based on low income from free and reduced students at each school. This includes carryover funds from last school year. $161,200 to blend with NC pre-K money to support our five pre-K programs in our schools. $47,349 for instructional assistance at our Boyhill Children's Home. $42,500 to assist with homeless students. $5,000 is required for foster student transportation and this is a new mandate this year. $115,000 for professional development for teachers in Title I Schools. $19,573.94 for parent involvement activities in the Title I Schools. $234,887.28 for administrative costs, which include salaries for Mr. Moss, myself, the administrative assistant, indirect costs, supplies, materials, workman's comp, insurance, retirement, and unemployment cost. And there was an opportunity for private schools in Haywood County to participate, but none chose to this year.
At this time, board members, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the Title I Plan as presented. Mr. Jimmy Rogers has made the motion. Do I hear a second? Second, with Mr. Smith, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Trantham, for that presentation and for the hard work in preparing that document. Dr. Nolte, you're up.
Alicia Glantz, excuse me, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, staff, normal salutations there and greetings. Mrs. Glantz is busy tonight with activities for her children. Actually, it's a school activity that she felt like she needed to attend. She has asked me to bring two items to you. The first one, Item 10, is migrant assurances. There are four assurances there that we commit to the state in fulfilling our requirements with the migrant program. These are not new. We have, you have approved these assurances through the years and with your approval, Dr. Garrett would sign these, but they're just basic requirements for migrant students. And we'd ask for your consideration and approval.
At this time, we entertain a motion. We approve the migrant application as presented.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Henson's made the motion. Do I hear a second? Second, with Dr. Rogers, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And in like fashion, Item 11 is Title III, which is English Language Learners. Sounds like the same thing, but some of the migrant students do not speak English well, but they move in and out of the district. English Language Learners are students who come to us primarily speaking Spanish, but we do have students with other languages that come and we receive some state funding to support them. And these are the eight assurances with legal references that we commit to follow in receiving those funds and spending them well. So, we would seek your approval for those assurances.
We entertain a motion that we approve the Title III application as presented. Ms. Barrett's made the motion. Do I hear a second? Second, with Mr. Smith, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, board. I'll let Ms. Glantz know.
Thank you. Next, we have Ms. Valeray. Did I say that correct? Valier. Been practicing now for six months. There's no excuse, Mr. Chairman. At least I didn't say Ms. Wood.
But that's okay. I'll answer to both.
Valier.
For your approval, we have the calendar waiver request.
This just allows us to start school a little bit later than what...
Earlier.
Earlier, that's right. End a little bit later.
Motion to approve the waiver request, Mr. Chairman.
All right, we have Mr. Rogers made a motion to approve the calendar waiver request. Do I hear a second? Second, with Dr. Rogers, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
17 years, I'm hoping one of these days we won't have to do this. We never get legislature to agree with us.
Just flexibility is all we're asking. Just a little flexibility without having to do the waiver. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Valier. Next, we recognize Mr. Haney once again.
Mr. Chairman, board members, what we're looking at is to approve before our Alternative School Accountability Proposal. As y'all know, an alternative school is not the same as a regular traditional high school. So, you've got copies of the measure and what we look at is 20% of student persistence, 20% of school performance. And in that school performance, we're still measured with Biology Math 1, English 2, ACT Work Keys, four-year graduation rate, five-year graduation rate, and math course rigor. You do not see ACT there. Students still take the ACT, but that's not a fair way to measure these students. We have students that are there for academic reasons. We have some students there for discipline reasons and due to that fact, we do not think that's a fair measure for those students. And it's 60% growth. That's what we think's a very fair measure. If you come in out of county, if you come in from another school, growth is a real good measure to see if you're moving forward. Mr. Mashburn has done an outstanding job with the ACT Work Keys. He's added classes from HCC to try to get them more ready for the workforce and not so much ready for college. Now, that doesn't say they can't go to college. That says that isn't a viable option for them. We want to put that forth as a motion to approve.
At this time, we entertain a motion. We approve the Alternative Accountability Model as presented. Dr. Rogers has made the motion. Do I hear a second? Second, with Ms. Barrett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Haney. Thank you, Mr. Mashburn. Now, we don't want to forget Mr. Jimmy Rogers. He's got some items from building and grounds tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Buildings and ground has met earlier and we had a pretty good list, but we're always a work in progress with our system. And thank you to Mr. McCannon on his hard work in the maintenance department. But this time, we would like to bring to the board as a motion that the buildings and grounds make the following recommendation, to hire an engineer to access the structure and safety of the Central Haywood High School gymnasium.
Do I hear a second to the motion? Second, with Ms. Barrett, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Is it that bad or we just want...
Well, as we, we're going to find out how bad. As we all know, that's a very old building, been through floods and several tragedies that we've had over the years that building's been sitting there. The bleachers and all the flooring has been removed out of the gymnasium and at this point in time, not much rain last week, but maybe measurable of about two inches in the clide area. And right now, everything is dry inside that gymnasium floor. But the building itself, structure of the building, if you notice, it's got some cracks up the side of each building, on each end of the building and there is a crack down the floorway inside the building. So, structurally safe and sound, that's what we're going to have to get an engineer to come in and make sure that this building is sufficient for continual use and safety of our children and see what the best usage is for that building in the future. And hopefully, everything will turn out well and we'll continue to progress and patch as long as we can patch and work as long as we can work with the funds we have to work with. But we appreciate everybody's patience on that. Appreciate Mr. Mashburn's patience on our gymnasium over there because it's always a work in progress with that gym as old as it is and being right in that water and the flood plain and everything like that. It's had some heavy hits and it's stood up well, but that's what we're looking at right now.
Any other questions or comments, discussion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
At this time, Mr. Chairman, that is all we're going to hit you with right now, but we'll have a long list next month.
Okay, sounds good. All right, next we have our Finance Chair, Mr. Henson. Will bring forward all the monthly reports and some other items, I think.
And first up, a motion to approve, we went over all the monthly financial reports and bring this in form of a motion to approve. Everything looked good.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I hear a second? Second, Mr. Clark, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And next up is a motion to approve Toshiba Business Solutions Service Agreement to extend through December 30th of 2018. And that's for all our copiers.
Okay. Have a motion from Mr. Henson. Do I hear a second? Second, with Mr. Smith, any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Is there about where they were at before?
Yeah. Actually, it's not a contract. It's more of a service agreement. We don't have to lease the machines. We pay by how much we use them.
Did you just want to say something, Mr. Trantham?
I was just going to say that that is correct. It's a service agreement. So, we just pay per copy. This is not a traditional lease agreement where we would be paying a lease on those machines. We just pay the service agreement on the copies we make.
Works well for us.
Yeah, it does work well.
Any other question or discussion? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
And one more thing is a motion to approve the High School Band Chorus Coral and Drama Supplement Schedule Increase.
Okay, motion on the floor. Do I hear a second? Second, with Ms. Barrett, any questions or comments on the motion on the floor?
Right now, we're looking at, total cost will be roughly $10,000 if everyone was employed. Pisgah right now doesn't have an assistant band director or either chorus department don't have assistants, so we won't be paying for that. But if they were there, then it costs us up to $10,000. Is that correct, Ms. Barrett? Head band director, and this is putting us on a schedule like with the football coaches and stuff too. One to three years and the next step will be four to eight years, next step nine to 12 and then 13-plus years. And the head band director, the assistant band director, chorus director, the head chorus director, assistant chorus director, and a drama director.
Any other questions? There being no other discussion, we'll vote on the motion on the floor. All those in favor say aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
That's all we have.
Dr. Garrett, would you make sure that the schedule is available to those that will be affected and make sure that we have a copy so everyone will have access to it? I think it's a good thing. It sets it down on a piece of paper and actually shows a schedule, which we haven't had in the past, and defines it much more better. I think I just said that wrong, but anyway, defines it better. But anyway, at this time, Dr. Garrett will have our personnel.
Chairman, members of the board, I have placed before you an updated telephone, cell phones, landlines and stuff of our administrators and central office and then also ITC and SROs and those other divisions. Second thing that I've placed before you is meeting schedule for the upcoming school year. You'll see board meetings, principal meetings, curriculum and instruction. Then when we have the group likes for the elementary, middle, and high and then lead teachers and then you can see the roundtable meetings as they are listed and then the support staff. You're invited to attend any or all of those that you can possibly work into your schedule. And then the last thing, I shared this with principals yesterday or last Thursday, is our organizational chart. Basically, it tells the different supervisors and directors, whether they're central office or school food services, maintenance or other departments, who works in those departments and exactly what their job descriptions would be. If you have questions on those, please don't hesitate to call. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your information, you have 27 separation from employments. You have 15 employee status changes. You have one leave of absence. Now, for your approval, you have 46 employments, 50 employee status changes, three leave of absences, one cooperative agreement, five substitutes, eight employee coaches, four non-employee coaches, eight volunteer services, 35 contracted services.
That's a lot of stuff, Dr. Garrett. At this time, we entertain a motion that we approve the personnel as presented.
So move, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Rogers has made the... Mr. Rogers has made the motion. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Henson. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Mr. Putnam, principal at Waynesville Middle School, will introduce his new assistant principal. You previously agreed upon that back in July. Also, Mrs. Rogers, principal at Hazelwood, will introduce her new assistant principal that you approved at last, our last call board meeting. So at this time, Mr. Putnam.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte, it is a distinct honor to introduce to you Mr. Graham Haines. He has exhibited leadership at Waynesville Middle School in the classroom, on the soccer field, as teacher and coach, and through our, our building as a whole, and he is committed to furthering the cause of bettering Waynesville Middle School on a daily basis, and he's already off to a really, really good start. So without further ado, Mr. Graham Haines.
First of all, I just want to say thank you to all board members, Mr. Francis, Chairman Francis. The dedication that you give to our school system, all the time you take out of your lives for that, we thank you. I want to thank Dr. Garrett and Dr. Nolte for the leadership that you provide our school system. Without your leadership, we wouldn't be Haywood County Schools up here. And last but not least, I want to thank Mr. Putnam, not just for hiring me as his AP, but hiring me as a teacher five years ago. Really mentoring me, teaching me the things that I need to know to hopefully be very successful in my new position. It's truly an honor to be the assistant principal at Waynesville Middle School. It's always something I've wanted to do, and it's great to be able to stay at the same school that I started at. I'm very excited to be able to serve my community further and Haywood County Schools, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Graham.
I feel like I've just done this, but thank you again for back in July, whenever, or the back in August, just a few weeks ago, whenever you met and you approved Ms. Baldwin. You know, she was out of town at the beach, having a great time, and was not able to be here, but she did want to come tonight and introduce herself. But just a quick word and a friendly reminder, Ms. Baldwin's coming to us from Buncombe County. She grew up in North Buncombe, went to North Buncombe High School, is a graduate from western Carolina and Appalachian State. She has taught first grade, sixth grade, seventh grade, eighth grade. She's led professional development and has truly, her, when I called her references to ask them, you know, what they could tell me about her, and tried to probe a little bit more, because I knew there had to be something, because everything was so positive, but just kidding. She truly, everything they said about her, they told me she was an athlete, she loved tennis, she was very competitive, and that when she got here, she would hit the ground running, and they hit that right on the head. She is a hundred and ten percent committed to working hard, and just in the, she could not wait to get started, so as soon as she'd go back from the beach, the next day, she was in the office, ready to go, and has proven that I think we made her a really excellent choice. So Amanda's coming to us, ready to work hard, and I think she's gonna make an excellent plot hound. So thank you again, Ms. Amanda Baldwin.
Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, Chairman Francis, and members of the board, thank you for giving me the opportunity to be part of a truly unique and innovative school district. I would also like to thank Wendy Rogers for the support and guidance that she has already provided me, and for giving me this chance. In my limited experience, I can tell that I am in a very special place with wonderful people. I look forward to helping Haywood County Schools continue to grow and become an even more successful school district. Thank you.
Congratulations, Graham, Mr. Haines, Ms. Baldwin, congratulations, and we look forward to hearing wonderful things from you folks. It sounds like y'all have already hit the ground running, and we appreciate your hard work and dedication so far, and we'll check up on you as the year goes on. We look forward to hearing good things about you, and I know we will. Congratulations, and we appreciate it, and welcome to Haywood County Schools. Is there anything else needs to come before the board? There being none?